We'll go ahead, before we get started, I'd like to welcome Tass Welch from Community Christ Church in Milton to lead us in the invocation.
Father, I'm so thankful that we have the freedom to assemble and that we have the freedom to be able to express our opinions and to share and to grow from expressing our opinions. November is a very special month in that we get to honor our veterans past and present, as well as have Thanksgiving. We should really be thankful all year round, but this is a really good month, and I know that we are so thankful for many things. I especially want to pray for the elected officials as well as the staff. There is so much that goes on behind the scenes that we never really get to see, much more than we can imagine to be able to run the city of Milton, and I'm grateful for the men and women that serve. And I just ask that you help us to be able to seek to understand each other before being understood sometimes, and that we can all learn from each other. And I just ask this in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you very much, Tass. We appreciate all you guys do for us. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, November 18th, 2013, to order. The city clerk, please call roll and make general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the November 18th, 2013, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment, either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk's staff prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that the individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within this chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood. Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Coons.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
And Councilmember Rick Moritz.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everybody here tonight. We appreciate you being here, and I want our city clerk to call the first item.
Our first item this evening is approval of the meeting agenda. This is Agenda Item Number 13-269.
Okay, I'd like to get the agenda approved, but I would ask that we add executive session for land acquisition and personnel. Is there anything else? Anybody else? Okay, I'll open that up for motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the meeting agenda with the addition of executive session for land acquisition and personnel.
Second motion. Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Thurman, and a second by Councilmember Lusk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council, and to provide input and opinions on any matter that's not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address. For the record, you'll have five minutes for remarks, not five meetings. Is there any public comment?
We do not have any, sir.
We can move on to our consent agenda, city. If you would read those items.
First item is approval of the October 21st, 2013, regular city council meeting minutes. Agenda item number 13-270. Next, approval of the November 4th, 2013, regular city council meeting minutes. Agenda item number 13-271. Our third and final consent agenda item, approval of an addendum to the professional services agreement between the city of Milton and Onsite Civil Group, LLC, for additional survey data on the Cogburn Road sidewalk project. This is Agenda Item Number 13-272.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Second. Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Lusk for approval, and a second by Councilmember Coons. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. And we don't have any items in the reports of presentation, so we'll move on to our first presentation.
Our first presentation item, consideration of an ordinance, reaffirming and establishing Chapter 46 of the Milton Code of Ordinances, governing solid waste collection services within the city of Milton, providing for the scope and nature of the operation, providing for the disposal of garbage, solid waste, and refuse, requiring the execution by service providers of a non-exclusive agreement with the city of Milton, providing procedures for the handling of complaints, providing for an infrastructure maintenance fee, requiring indemnity insurance, providing for revocation and amendment, prohibiting assignment and subletting without consent, providing for forfeiture, and for making other provisions. This is Agenda Item Number 13-273.
Okay, do I have a motion, second? First presentation.
Mayor, I move that we accept the first presentation as read by the city clerk.
Second. Okay, I've got a motion from Councilmember Longoria, second by Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That would you announce? Okay, we can move on to our public hearing. City?
Our item under public hearing, alcohol beverage license application. This is consideration of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to ALAR Enterprises, LLC, Doing Business as Chevron Food Mart, located at 13021 Deerfield Parkway, Milton, Georgia, 30004. The applicant is Aloudan Matani, Retail Package Sale, Wine and Malt Beverages. This is Agenda Item Number 13-274. Ms. Stacy Inglis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you, the applicant has actually met all of their requirements. I know this is one that was deferred the last meeting, simply because they were not able to get their sign posted in time due to some issues, I believe, with their closing. Everything is fine now. They had the sign posted. They've met all the requirements of our ordinances, and this is simply an ownership change, and staff recommends approval.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on this?
We do not, sir.
Okay. Was there any questions for staff before I close the public hearing? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion or any questions? If not, I'll open up for motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 13-274.
Second. Okay, I've got a motion from Councilmember Hewitt, second from Councilmember Coons. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Stacy. We don't have any items on our zoned agenda, so we'll move to unfinished business. City, if you'll call it on.
Consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Article 6, Administration Financial Management Program, Section 2, 262A2, to provide for piggybacking from contracts of other public entities that have been renewed or extended. This is Agenda Item Number 13-262. First presentation was at the November 4th regular council meeting. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you very much. This is a matter involving your purchasing regulations, and you may recall that not so long ago, we'd actually come back in front of you and done some modification to, in fact, this what we're calling the piggybacking section of your purchasing regs, because as it used to read, you could only do what's called piggybacking, which basically means using or jumping on or allowing the use of a previously competitively negotiated bid or procurement policy or process by a municipality. That doesn't make a whole lot of sense while it was limited to just municipalities when other level governments make just as good of competitive procurement processes as well, so we kind of modified that language a little bit. However, within the context of an actual purchase for uniforms, which you're actually going to hear later in your agenda, we found out that there were some other challenges with this language, particularly with respect to the timing element. Sometimes agreements may be entered that have a year durational component, but sometimes they are extended or renewed, and the way our regs read, they did not allow us to continue to piggyback even if they had been extended or renewed, and we felt, as a staff and legal counsel, that that made very little sense, particularly within the context of what you're going to hear later, where it made perfect sense to use that. So what we have come up with is a very modest extension of the language in your purchasing regs that basically says that we would have the right to piggyback on a prior competitively bid purchase that derives or arises out of a contract following 12 months from the entry into that contract, or 12 months following the renewal or extension of that agreement. Again, with respect to the source contract, which may be another city's contract or another county's contract, could have been perfectly fine in existence, but if it had been renewed, Milton wouldn't have been able to have taken the advantage of it. And of course, you know, this policy is all based upon whatever staff believes makes the best financial sense for the city, so it wouldn't be applied except in a way that makes good financial sense. And of course, we can't piggyback when there is a state law requirement of competitive RFPs or competitive bids. This has nothing to do with that. This is purely a utilitarian thing aimed at allowing staff more flexibility to make good decisions based on, hopefully, competitive purchases that other jurisdictions have made. Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Is there any questions for Bill?
Ken, does this mean that we can piggyback on an existing contract at any time during that contract period?
Yes, sir, it does. Not only during the contract period, but also any renewal or extension term of that contract, or even a 12-month period after that renewal or extension period has ended. Yes, sir.
Say that in the last part of it.
Right. What the language says is, is for a period of 12 months after or following entry, renewal, or extension. So to the extent that a contract with another jurisdiction has been extended or renewed, we would be able to piggyback off of that renewal or extension, or for a period 12 months afterwards.
So that, for example, a contract was established, then it was renewed for another year, and this is by another jurisdiction. We could enter on the last day of the renewal period, and that would extend our contract?
Remember, though, we're not extending their agreement. All we're doing is taking advantage of the purchases or the pricing that they have secured in their agreement. The agreement will be our own. The agreement will have to be brought in front of you and entered in front of the council. We're simply deriving the benefit of the pricing, that's all. And other jurisdictions can be any other city, county, state? Yes, that's correct. Well, not what it says is city, county, local authority, and Board of Education.
Board of Education, yes.
I think, you know, for the purposes of this discussion, I think maybe what I was hearing Ken was saying, and I think what Bill was reacting to, and I want to highlight it because I don't think we might have had just a miscommunication there, is that if in fact it's extended or renewed, it's extended or renewed for a period of time.
Correct.
And for that period of time, that it is still extended or renewed and valid, in whatever jurisdiction it is, pick one, let's say Cobb County, for the purpose of highlighting it, if Cobb County extends or renews on January 1st for a year, our ability to potentially purchase under that extended contract is for the period of time that Cobb could also purchase on that contract, or from January 1st for the whole year.
That's right.
What I heard Ken say, and I think maybe where the confusion got, is that the code then would allow for an additional year on top of that, and I don't think that that's the case. I think that if it's renewed or extended at a date-specific period of time, that while it's still valid in the jurisdiction in which it was competitively bid, it's still a valid contract for the purposes of the section, is that?
We're still bound by the same contract period or renewal period as the other jurisdiction would establish.
Right. We don't create our own, but as long as it's
Right.
...valid in the jurisdiction, it's valid according to our code. Is that right?
Well, again, what I'm trying to clarify is, is that the agreement is going to be our agreement, that their agreement secures their pricing, our agreement secures our own pricing. This is simply the vehicle by which we get to lock in their pricing, and of course, they have to agree to it, and we're seeing that most of them do. Most of the vendors will in fact do that and say, we agree to be bound by the pricing currently in existence in jurisdiction X pursuant to that contract.
Our contract period and renewal period would not necessarily coincide with the other jurisdictions.
No, sir.
That's right.
Absolutely not.
So I guess...
It has to be valid there for us to use it.
That's correct.
That's correct. Whatever invalidates, it's not usable.
Right.
Let's say Cobb County entered into a contract to purchase something, and then they entered into an extension a year later. If 10 months later, we wanted to purchase some of those things, and we wanted to purchase them over a year's period of time, would we be able to do that? As long as we entered into the contract during the extended period of time that the other jurisdiction's contract?
That's my interpretation. Yes.
And so it's really up to us, I mean, the whole purpose of this is to make sure we're getting the best possible price for whatever it is we're purchasing and using the taxpayers' money in the best possible way. And so it's really up to us to whether or not a contract that's been extended two or three times, to make sure that we have checked it out, it really is the best possible price, without having to go through the whole competitive bid process.
That's right. And again, yes, that's correct. And again, if this doesn't make any sense, then staff won't use it, but it does provide...
And if we feel like we can get a better price by doing our own competitive bidding and taking the time and effort to do that, then we would just do a competitive bid.
Just because it's easy doesn't mean it's right.
Right. But this gives us the flexibility to use another price that's already out there without having to go through it if we feel like the price already out there is the best price.
That's correct. That will be highlighted here in just a little bit, you'll see.
Okay.
That thought process in uniform acquisition.
So would you say that initially, we'll go through a competitive bidding process, knowing what the current contract is, regardless of what the current?
I would not suggest that that would be the case in all circumstances. I would believe, and I have seen, the contracts that have been, let's just say Alfreda Goes to Bid for something and awards it, and two months later, we need the same thing, or Roswell. I don't know that there's any reason to go back at that point to the market in another competitive bid to validate something that's 60 days old, but I might look at that very differently if we're talking about something that is three calendar years old, and then it might make sense to take what would be usable and confirm it, but I don't know in all circumstances I consider that makes sense.
But it may be the other jurisdiction actually got a better price because of the quantity that they were buying, and we can actually piggyback on theirs, where somebody might not necessarily competitive bid ours, which is a smaller quantity.
That is quite often the case when it comes to just share volume.
And bottom line, this just allows us to take advantage of a good deal based on another jurisdiction's work, but not being held to it, though.
They've already been through competitive bidding process.
Yeah, and a lot of times on a small item that maybe we need or something, and, you know, go out there and find that they've already done the legwork. Anybody else? No?
I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 13-262.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Coons, second by Councilmember Thurman. For approval, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. City, please call the next new business.
Our next item, under new business, consideration of a resolution adopting the 2014 City of Milton City Council Regular Meeting and Work Sessions Schedule. This is Agenda Item Number 13-275. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are asking for the mayor and council's consideration of a resolution which will approve the scheduled 2014 council regular meetings and work sessions. You have before you the oversized calendar.
Thank you.
And the eight-and-a-half-by-eleven version, showing the 36 upcoming council meetings for 2014. The blue highlighting indicates a regular council meeting, the red highlighting, a work session. In 2014, there are two regular city council meeting dates, which will fall on a Wednesday due to holidays, being on a Monday, and that's Martin Luther King Day and President's Day. In preparing the 2014 calendar, the following dates were taken into consideration: the city's 11 observed holidays, the Fulton County School Calendar, as well as the Mayor's Day Conference in January, and the GMA Conference in June. Our first regularly scheduled meeting will be on Monday, January 6th, 2014. The 2014 council meeting calendar will be available to our citizens on our website if you approve this. We respectfully ask for your approval of the 2014 council meeting dates.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 13-275. Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Moritz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. City, if you'll call the next item.
Our next item is consideration of a resolution to authorize the mayor and city council to approve participation by the city of Milton in a regional submission of the FY13 Assistance to Firefighters Grant to the Federal Emergency Management Agency. This is Agenda Item Number 13-276. Mr. Chris Lagerblum.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution brought before you tonight that we seek to enter into on behalf of the radio authority, the North Fulton Radio Authority. One of the areas of focus this year with the Assistance to Firefighters Grant is interoperability. That happens to be the number-one thing that they have advertised that they would like to fund in the Assistance to Firefighters grant. Typically, you try to find interoperability, you see success if you put two people together and say they can talk more before they couldn't. It's highly unlikely that we'd ever have the opportunity again, but really encouraging at this point that we'd find a way to bring four agencies together in the form of interoperability. This resolution is being presented to each of the four member cities councils. There is a financial match that goes into the mix here, which is 10%, so it's one of those things that we do want to indicate that there's funding implications with, but I would tell you that this funding would be offset in the dollars that are already currently budgeted in the capital projects account for this radio system project. So really, this would be funds that would go towards something that we're budgeted for now, but this would be a better use of those dollars if it were to be approved. The resolution that was presented to you is in good shape, although I want to bring your attention that if you happen to want to approve this tonight, which would be my recommendation, that in the Sixth Whereas Clause, there's been a change as recent as this afternoon that all four cities would like to make, and they would like to change out the words APX 6000SE portable radios, and replace it with ASTRO 25 APX 6000XE digital portable radios, or its acceptable equivalent. So we wanted to make sure that in the form of the resolution, we didn't specify exactly what radio we intended to buy, but to have one that was appropriate, but not specific to a certain brand and model. If we were to move forward with this, and if we were to be successful, the quantity of radios that we would seek would be 59 portables, 14 mobiles, and three base stations. That would be radios that would swap out what we have within the current existing, that we have that attach to the current existing radio system, and move us almost entirely to the new system in one acquisition as opposed to over several years. That would be our recommendation, and it would be in conformance with what the other cities are doing as well.
Can we make that change in what we're signing?
Oh, yes. If somebody is so inclined to make the motion, I'll ask that that modification of language be changed.
Okay.
So if you were to say, Chris, what's the financial impact of this? It would be 10% of somewhere in the, yeah, 10% of, I'll tell you here, I'll get you real close, sorry, I didn't have that on my phone today, you can do anything. So 59 is 66. About $30,000, $30,400.
And that's already...
Would be the 10% match.
So it would actually save us $270,000.
That's correct. So with that, Alfred is contemplating this tonight, and Johns Creek is not contemplating it because there is not leverage there. Sorry, Sandy Springs is, and Roswell is at some point before the end of November. I'd seek your approval.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
So what was the change you wanted us to make in the motion?
If somebody were to make the motion to approve, it would be the motion to approve this resolution with a change in the Sixth Whereas Clause from APX 6000SE portable radios, and replace it with ASTRO 25 APX 6000XE digital portable radios, or its acceptable equivalent.
Okay, so if you ever make the motion, if they want to clarify that, that based on the record, what the city manager just...
I'll make a motion.
Okay?
That we approve a resolution to authorize the mayor and city council to approve participation by the city of Milton in a regional submission of the FY13 Assistance to Firefighters Grant to the Federal Emergency Management Agency with the amendments and modifications put forth by the city manager.
I'll second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Lusk, second by Councilmember Thurman for approval with the modifications stated by the city manager. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, we'll move on to reports. Anything that the council has they want to share?
Mayor, we've got one more agenda item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Piggyback.
City clerk, will you please call the next item?
As much as I'd rather, I would rather just skip over this.
What I was trying to give you...
You're trying, you're trying, I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor.
Don't blame it on me.
We've got consideration of a resolution of the city council of Milton, Georgia, ratifying and authorizing payment for a purchase of uniforms from TNT Uniforms pursuant to and by way of a piggyback on pricing and terms under a contract between TNT Uniforms and Cherokee County, Georgia, and a competitive procurement process involving Clayton County, Georgia. Agenda Item Number 13-277. Mr. Chris Lagerblum.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution I'd like to, I guess, start with by saying, you know, this is where it all began, because it was this acquisition that caused us to look at the piggyback thing in our code, and really dig into what it said, and where there were some modifications that needed to be made versus what we thought we were dealing with versus what we were actually dealing with. This was a purchase of uniforms for the fire department, and when we purchase, we acquire sometimes twice a year, often just once a year based upon some type of a bulk order. The uniforms are personalized, meaning we sew the firefighters' names onto them, and we add our own patches, so it's really, once the acquisition is made, it's really one of those things that one size fits all for us, and is not really one-size-fits-all for everybody else. We purchased, and believe we were purchasing these uniforms off of a contract that was valid in Cherokee County, and in fact, it was valid in Cherokee County, and a extension letter had been issued, which extended the piggyback in Cherokee County. It's where it was a valid, valid extended contract. When we started to look at our piggybacking code specifically, and Ken pulled out the nuance of the word municipality, we recognized that we didn't necessarily have a code that would have allowed for the county acquisition, so it caused us to look further into the county's acquisition to realize that it was a piggyback from a Clayton County contract that had since expired. So you look at all that and go, oh, boy, that's not good. So a couple of different things we could have done, and I posed to Ken, I said, I want the cleanest and most above-board transparent way of trying to authorize this purchase, because I didn't feel very comfortable trying to return it. You don't want to buy all this stuff and have somebody's name stitched on it and then t-... have a vendor try to take it back. And he said, Chris, I think this is probably the cleanest way to do it, not sure that we necessarily even needed to bring this resolution forward, but the thing I want the council to have some confidence in is that even if it's ten bucks, twenty bucks, nine hundred bucks, or twenty-four, two-hundred-forty thousand dollars, if we identify an acquisition or purchase that at the time believed was in good faith, but have since found that it probably did not conform with our purchasing policies, I want you to have enough comfort in us that we'll bring those forward in the form of this type of a resolution and seek your ratification on the back end. This is a way that we could close this, we won't have to worry about future challenges. I can tell you truly believe, so does the fire department based upon other purchasing, that we got a very good price. I have absolutely no question that the price would have been competitive if we had needed to prove it, and in fact, I think we thought in Cherokee County even thinks and thought that the purchases that were being made were on a valid piggyback contract. So, that's the long and the short of this. This is a purchase that has been made. I don't know how we can act in good faith and return the items. In fact, I don't think that that's a viable option at this point. So, the Whereas Clause is in this resolution basically lay out the policy perspective and the policy rationale of how we got from A to Z, and the fact that we've now addressed our code and also our internal policies so that we shouldn't have this one, shouldn't have an item like this come forward in this type of a resolution again. I'm happy to answer any questions and would seek your support in closing this one out to move on from here.
Any questions or comments?
All I was going to say, and the city manager's comments, is that it's really nice to be in a jurisdiction that does it this way and sits here and comes in front of the council and says, this is what we're doing, this is where we are, and then I get commissioned by the city manager to say, put together a resolution that says, that spells out everything in exact detail of what occurred. Very nice. Everybody's to be honored.
Did you say you get a commission off?
Not allowed.
Full disclosure. And the part I did bring up, Council, is this essentially amounts to what we're trying to close out here as a purchase in the amount of twenty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty cents. It is a budgeted and approved expenditure.
The mayor's already on it, so. Okay. Anything else? Not, I'll open up for a motion. And I just, you know, thank our staff and city attorney just to make sure that they're thinking to cover themselves, the city, and us, and appreciate that effort.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve Agenda Item 13-277, consideration of a resolution of the City Council of Milton, Georgia ratifying and authorizing payment for a purchase of uniforms from TNT Uniforms pursuant to and by way of a piggyback on pricing and terms under a contract between TNT Uniforms and Cherokee County, Georgia, and a competitive procurement process involving Clayton County, Georgia.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Thurman, second from Councilmember Coats. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Now, we'll move on to reports. Anything the council would like to report on?
I got something.
Okay.
Myself and Councilman Lusk just completed last week, along with about fifteen or twenty citizens, the Citizens Police Academy that was put on by our police department, and I'll have to say that I thought it was an excellent program that we did, that they put on and that we offer as a city, and I was thoroughly impressed with our officers' knowledge and professionalism and everything they taught us, so I appreciate being able to take part in that.
Might add, one of the sessions was put on by our fire department, and that was equally as impressive and enjoyed the, appreciated the information that they gave us during that session and realized a lot of the responsibilities and duties and restrictions and liabilities that the city has faced with both of these departments, so it's pretty enlightening. And I spoke with Chief Harold afterwards, and I suggested that members of the class might write a little testimonial and promote that, reuse that next year when we start up the event next year. I think it's a pretty good turnout with twenty people, and I think we could continue to do that and hopefully expand.
Good course. Go ahead.
Good course.
And I think we need to owe thanks to Target. I think a grant from them is what helped us put this on, so thank you.
No, great deal, and thanks to our public safety, and thank you guys for participating. Maybe you could, also maybe each of you could write a letter, you know, explaining how it was to get tased, or maybe just Councilmember Hewitt.
He has more experience than I have.
Not fun.
It wasn't bad, I'd do it again.
Okay, anybody else? All right.
I just want to say for Veterans Day as well, to Bill Lusk, great job with the crosses again, and that was, Freedom Park is an excellent asset for the city, and I'm glad we have it and having everybody there, that was an excellent turnout, which is great, and Representative Tom Price being there for us, and all of us as a community, I was just very happy to see that, and good job with that all.
Yep, good time out.
Appreciate the time that staff devoted to it, and glad to see the contractor made it in on time.
You know what? You didn't really have a choice. You don't have a bunch of angry veterans out there.
All armed.
Yep, okay. We'll move on to staff reports.
Couple of things tonight, Mayor and Council, we'll get to those maps that are here at this minute that are handed out. Want to just give you an update, you, like us, probably after disasters occur in the nation like yesterday, when you have to roll through the midsection of the country and end up with people losing their lives, they, people start to ask questions here at home and say, what's the status of your tornado-siren project? So, I just want to update you, and we've responded to a couple of those questions. We, the bidding process is closed, we're doing our due diligence reviewing the responses, and we anticipate having a citywide deployment of severe weather warning sirens in spring of 2014. So, we're months away, not years. Bid process is closed, we're just selecting a vendor now and start to move forward, and that will be an entire city build-out as opposed to it being a phased approach, so it'll be, the cities will all of a sudden have severe weather warning sirens in spring next year, so. That's an update on that. There has been a lot of talk here lately, and then I'm going to do lead-in and then turn it over to our staff. A lot of talk about this, what amounts to, or what appears to be, this fast, fast, fast development, fast growth, lots of houses coming underground, lots of, lots of construction crews mobilizing, and the reality is, is there's a lot of that going on in Milton right now. There's a lot of that going on in Milton, there's a lot of that going on in Alpharetta. Church had earlier this morning their city administrators who, in two developments has almost as many units as we have in Milton, being, like, right on between the Sharp Development and this, and wherever that is, Bethany, I guess, and those are two Alpharetta developments. We have several things in the different stages of planning here in Milton that's developers bringing ideas to us or coming and believing that they are by right entitled to certain development on certain pieces of property. What I'd like to do, and this is kind of a rollout tonight, is give you all some type of a visual as to what's actually being contemplated here in Milton, and then by project, talk a little bit about what that trend looks like over the last four or five years, and then also start to frame a discussion that we need to start having with the community so that we can be having this discussion with them as opposed to there being discussions occurring that, to some degree, are factual, but to some degree are driven by just the sheer not knowing of what's going on, and if a bulldozer shows up and starts to knock down a tree, we need to, you know, there's probably a real good reason why, but the more information we can get, the better we are. So, I'd like to do a quick little presentation, I let you all digest it, let you react to it, and then maybe we can talk about how we get some of the information out to the public, so that we'll turn it over to-
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You should have in front of you two items. One is a map with numbers on it, and then secondly, attached should be a key to those numbers, which is an Excel spreadsheet that shows number of units, type of development, who's developing it, and where. So, I'm going to work off of those and also add some trends as well. So, you have in front of you the map. The map basically has three different colors on it. The first color is blue, and that delineates projects that are either under review or under construction. They've come through, they've been plotted, and they're about ready to either have land disturbance or actual houses are being constructed on them. The red stands for rezoning, and that's those developments that are in the queue essentially for a rezoning application. The third color is a green color, and that delineates those parcels that have come in to talk to the staff about pre-development. We actually haven't officially received anything on those development parcels, but we wanted to at least acknowledge that they're in play at the moment. So, basically, those are essentially the development parcels. I do, by the way, have Jimmy Sanders and Robin here to answer any specific questions that you may have on these projects. There are a number of them, and also keep in mind that this is not a static list, it's changing daily, but this is up to date as of this afternoon. I just want to go through the implications of these building permits. Essentially, what you have on the map represents seven-hundred-and-seventy-one. Now, some of those will be underway obviously in thirteen and then may linger through to fifteen, but what we've done is we've shown them all in 2014. So, you can see the comparison, if you start at 2010, where we had a hundred and three, and then 2011, we went to one-eighteen, and then up to three-seventeen, and then two-seventy-nine, and then finally, 2014, we're up to seven-seventy-one. And if you take residential permits, there is a formula you can use to estimate, as a result of that, what the population trend would be, and you can see that, again, if you look at the official census in 2010, and then you extrapolate that the numbers that you get off of the building permits, we're showing that by 2014, we're up to thirty-six thousand six hundred seventy people in population. And we have an interesting comparison. Georgia Power has a special software that they use. Again, they key off of the census data, but they look at growth in a different way than building permits, and they have come up with the fact that in 2017, they expect our population to be thirty-six eight hundred. Well, that's where, in 2014, we're at that number. So, you can see that we've had a real fast growth to be experienced in 2014. And again, this shows a population delta that shows the annual population growth, and if you look at the census data from 2010, from ten to eleven, we had a population growth of a little under one percent, and then in 2012, two-point-six percent essentially. 2013, we grew two-point-two percent, and then in 2014, we're showing that six percent growth. So, we are growing. The map shows you where we're growing, and clearly, if you have any questions, I have staff here to answer any specifics that you may have.
Okay, I, you know, first just comment, thank you, Kathy and staff, Jimmy and Robin, and everybody else. You guys, Michelle, putting this together for us, because there is a lot, you know, people just all of a sudden see trees going up, and, you know, there's the, probably all start to get into the comments of, you know, are we just, you know, not watching and letting people go crazy and developers and building in Milton, and so it's nice to have this information in front of us, because as I had said a while back, people don't really realize all the stuff in the works that really doesn't come to us as a city council or to the public because it all lies under existing zoning, so it's at least good to be aware of this. And I've already talked to our staff, and Jason, I want to really get some public awareness going that this isn't necessarily a direction of the city council of the city, but, you know, the majority, except for a handful, these aren't even going through rezoning.
That's right.
And it's private properties, you know, ownership rights, it's existing zoning, and it's to what most folks would consider low density, but it is still adding a lot of, lot of impact to homes and citizens and traffic to Milton, so, again, there's not a whole lot we can do about it, but it's good to at least be aware of it, have everybody aware of it, and I want to get some, some awareness out there that, you know, these folks are, that they're selling a property or development and have the legal rights to do so, and that it is all under existing zoning that they would have been able to do, you know, ten, twenty, thirty years ago as well as now, so, but it just happens to be, it's kind of going to be highlighted because we've been in a downturn and all of a sudden now, unfortunately or fortunately, Milton's a great place to live, so the first place people are looking to build and buy houses are here in Milton, so. I've got another question, Matt?
Yeah, Bill and I had met with some residents last week, and obviously, there are a lot of people moving here because we're doing a lot of the right things, so that's a positive thing, but most of the development is, is in our district where we are in the north end, and obviously-
So, can we just give about your number?
Yeah, absolutely. So, one of the things, obviously, we had to explain that these are one-acre lots. Some suggestions ever brought forward to us, you know, change the acreage lot minimum, which I'm not necessarily sure that's going to be a good thing, or puts together some, or do a lottery for the development, which that breeds all kinds of other issues. But one idea that I think I'd love to have a presentation on by staff would be conservation subdivisions, primarily where we are. We know there's some things in that, but I think from a direction standpoint, as these developments come in, as we're driving through these roads, we'd love to be able to see the continuous rural, you know, agriculture of that while, at the same time, the property rights need to be allowed. If we can in some way direct something that makes, makes that rural culture stay as much as possible rather than us being subdivisions all over the place, I would love to really start delving into that process.
Okay, sure. Be happy to do that.
And if you could, as a staff, put together something to present to us, that would be great.
You can do that.
Bert?
I don't know if it's possible, but I've read that some folks may be coming out to the Planning Commission meeting to discuss this with the Planning Commission. Maybe you could speak to that if you're in the Planning Commission meeting as well.
Okay, sure, that's a very good point, and maybe I would just bring this whole presentation along.
Perhaps so.
Yeah, I think that'd be smart.
Excellent.
And maybe define where our boundaries are in some subdivisions that aren't in Milton that are going on our borders.
Yes.
Bill?
On our projections, our population projections, and those of Georgia Power, how does that in, how do they fall in line in comparison with our comprehensive land use plan projections?
Let me get the comp plan expert up here.
Yes, good evening. When we did the comprehensive plan, we used a two-percent growth rate, and if you notice, Georgia Power is right at almost two, one-point-seven. Let's see, where's my pointer? They're right over here, one-point-seven-six, and we did a two-percent growth rate, but the trends, based on where this is, we're at two-point-nine-six, and then, of course, these are pretty actual because we use the building permit information for 2011 and 12, and we have two months of reporting left for 2013, and so we're higher than the two percent that we worked out, so, for both of these.
I think by 2025, hadn't we projected around fifty thousand?
We didn't go that far. We were more like at forty-three thousand, but we'll probably hit there quicker with this, unless we stabilize, we might just have this big jump and then stabilize later on, but this is kind of where, let's see, what's the other one, would be actual, yeah. So, we're maybe at thirty-six or so, and so, fast approaching to forty-three, but, you know, we're not even in 2020 yet, but we were projecting for 2030 to be close to fifty, but we didn't quite say, you know, say fifty, so. So, a little bit different.
Is there a way to update this map and just put like hash marks on the ones that we have actually rezoned since we became a city of Milton? Because I don't think there's that many of them that have actually had to go through a rezoning process. And I know, I've seen a lot of the emails in that we're, you know, we're allowing a lot more development that could be developed, and, you know, I've seen people say we should have stayed as Fulton County, because they wouldn't have allowed this much development. And the truth of the matter is, not many of these of we actually-
Right.
-rezoned greater than what they were.
Yeah, so, to start out with, before we became a city, everybody rushed to do the rezonings, like you said. So, we had everything, a lot of things already in place, and they did the LDPs. To be honest, the very first single-family residential zoning that was before you was Ashton Woods Milton Preserve about two years ago. That was the very first single-family residential that you saw before you. Everything else was commercial or use permits. I can almost tell you there might be three to four, five rezonings, and most of those are CUPs to change setbacks in AG1. You did recently do Hopewell Road for an R3 for the sewer extension, that was a couple of months ago.
And which one is the Hopewell Road for a three?
It'll be under development or review.
Is that number-
Or actually, I think it's still under rezoning, because they haven't even submitted their LDP. So, if, it's on Hopewell Road, the lower part. So, that was one, as well as earlier this year, you did the Beezer Homes, which is near Vaughn and Hopewell. Yeah. Well, I can't read that, yeah?
Yeah, 22, yeah.
So, let me, it's what? 22.
22.
26.
Yeah.
Six we didn't do, I think six was already.
That's Beezer.
No, oh, I'm sorry.
Six was Beezer, okay.
Yeah, and then Beezer, you did earlier this year, and that was for NUP, which were, they're fairly small lots, they're like quarter-acre lots, because there was already sewer there.
Okay, now, quarter-acre lot, though, this is a minimum of 4,000 square feet. A quarter-acre lot is not bigger than 4,000 square feet.
So, yeah, you're right, it was 4,000 square feet. But most of them are a little bit bigger than 4,000. It was, I believe the density was like 3.6 units per acre for the Beezer home.
Okay.
And then the other one further north, on top of Milton Place, which is the one you did recently, that was a sewer extension, the density was fairly low, it was like 1.7.
So, out of all the colors on this thing, very few of them have actually ever come before us for a rezoning.
Right, and I mean, I, I didn't include the historical ones, the ones that are there are the current ones that have been applied for.
But I don't think there've been any that, new ones that have come before us in the last seven years that have been built out, that we've actually rezoned?
You have. It is Milton Preserve at Ashton Woods across from Crooked.
That are finished, though.
That's, they're totally sold out.
They're done, okay.
They sold out in about a year, and there were about, what was it, 36 lots or 43, 45 lots? They went very quickly. And in fact, one of the new rezonings that's going to be before you in January is another Ashton Woods, just north of CVS and Highway 9. They did so well, the old, the bank property that was zoned O and I, they're coming before you in January. So, if you guys look at the newspaper, today's newspaper, it'll have all the legal ads for all of my four new rezonings.
Now, that one Ashton Woods, though, that was one that was zoned commercial that we-
It was.
Okay, so early, it was a downzoning to the-
Right.
For the single family.
That's the one where the nurseries used-
It's right across from Crooked Creek.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
So, really, there, you know, since we've been a city, there's collectively, there's been very few residential rezonings. That's really all the AG1 subdivisions that have come in for LDPs and plating, so.
Mayor?
How are we doing on the TDRs?
I'll let, Kathy, we're not. I mean, we're, we're out there marketing them as best we can. We've had some inquiries, and we encourage them, truly, and we have lined up a few large estate owners who are interested in selling them, but we've never been able to actually make the match, not for lack of trying.
Do you know what the spread is between a TDR and what a property owner would get for selling his land to a developer?
No, no, we haven't, we really felt that it was something that the potential buyer and the potential seller needed to talk to one another. You know, the potential buyer is always saying, well, what's the value of a TDR? And, you know, it's, it's hard really to ascertain that. But, you know, if we had some really serious buyers, we would sort of push that topic and really make an effort to, to really help them find out what that value is. But it's been more in the concept discussion point, rather than the reality discussion point at this point.
What can we do to encourage that selling of TDRs? Do we need to do some more marketing?
Well, you know, it, it takes a special lot that can, can accept that added density. And what we're finding is that the density in Crab Apple, for instance, seems to suffice for development purposes. We're hoping it's Deerfield, and again, I think it's more office-related or commercial-related, where we'd see higher densities. I think that that's where we're going to see the TDRs used more. But for residential purposes, what they've got seems to suffice for townhomes or single-family that they're doing.
Do you think the large landowners in the Deerfields corridor are really aware of TDRs?
We have had meetings with the realtors and with some of the landowners to explain the concept to them, and we did that early on, because there is potential there, and we would certainly like to maximize that.
My, my thoughts on that, I mean, obviously, as our commercial area is not yet built out, there's really not a desire or demand for TDRs by the developers, which is kind of the issue. I think that, you know, there, there may be a question of whether or not we, as a city, may want to broker that and potentially try to buy some to get the process rolling. That is a thought, because anybody can buy them.
That's right, we could, and we, that's right.
And we could always resell them as need be. But that may be, I think that's probably our dilemma, is that as we put people together, the demand on the other side isn't there, because they don't want to spend the extra money to build something when they only know they can go so far up and, and just get that done. Until that's built out, I think it's going to be difficult to see that, and in that sense, we might miss the opportunity. We may want to consider possibly getting into that market.
Well, that's certainly an avenue to, to consider, and if, if we get to that point of making a deal, I think that that's, that's something we can always, if there appears to be a viable avenue, that, to come back to the council to make that, you know, request.
I think, I think that's something we, as a council, should consider. At, at some point, and obviously, from a direction, we want to preserve as much as we can, but, you know, and we want the free market to take effect, too. Just the question of, is it TDR available, who owns it? If we, as a city, own a couple of them, that might get the ball rolling also, just to get it started, what you're saying. And that's just a thought, maybe you present that to us as well.
We can look at that, but be mindful as well, we already own some.
Well, there you go.
So, you know, we, we own 200-plus up our 155 at this point up in Birmingham, we own 20-plus acres at Bell Memorial Park, so-
Oh, we do.
You know, any of the parkland has transfer development right opportunities that we could transfer that, our development rights off of the parklands, but we don't have anybody beating our door down to do that either, so we, we are in the business of owning some.
So, how many do we own then, how many do yours?
We'd have to calculate that, but we would be the sum total of whatever development rights exist on our parkland, park spaces.
I'm just trying to think what the options are from a, I mean, from a development standpoint, if we can direct that development, or if we can, you know, understand the financial implications of what that competition is. That would give us a better discussion with those current landowners who may no longer want to use them in the future. So, just my thoughts.
Let me ask a, more of a philosophical question, and I'm going to direct Mr. Kathy, Ken, Chris, you know, all our staff. See what happens when you give the kids a map. You know, and I hear some, you know, we're, we're looking for information to be on the defensive side on what we have, let, you know, been zoned or what we haven't and whatnot. But looking at it from the other side, you know, a lot of people will say, well, why don't you guys do something to stop the development or slow it down? And I honestly don't know anything legal, other than if we just did a blanket moratorium, which may not be practical, or, you know, it'll have its ramifications. So, you know, how, how do you answer someone when they say, well, why don't you guys just enact where, you know, minimum lot's got to be two acres, three acres from now on, or, why don't you slow down the development, or don't allow any development here and there? You know, and again, there may, may be an answer to that, there may not be. I, I can't think of anything that, you know, is really fair that, you know, that you can do that. I mean, if someone, you know, as long as we're keeping the development down to the existing zoning requirements, it's pretty hard to go the opposite way without, you know, offering something instead. You know, we always get the, no one wants the 20 acres behind them developed, because they enjoy looking at it, but no one's willing to step up and buy it. You know, and Ken, in your experience, are, are there, other than just say, you know, hey, we, we decided, and I don't even know if this is legal, you know, elect to have a moratorium, no more building permits or whatever, obviously, that wouldn't stand up for very long. You know, what's, do you guys have any thoughts, or, or want to think about it and give us some talking points at some point of, you know, what we can and can't do?
Mr. Mayor, just, just first blush, I mean, this isn't, this isn't the only jurisdiction that is having the same discussion right now. I mean, there, there are others, as the developer continues to heat up, and other jurisdictions are kind of looking around and looking at options, and, and other groups of citizens are also saying, wow, you know, looks like the dam has come unporous a little bit. You, you know, the reality is a moratorium is, first of all, it has to be justified by a reason. If you're going to try to put a moratorium, for instance, on dozoni, what would be the rationale? And again, I know that no one's proposing this, we're talking about this hypothetically, but what would be the reason for that? Many jurisdictions do it either to upgrade, update their comprehensive plan, if they believe that they're behind the ball in what the plan needs to look like, or they need to modify their zoning code. But again, it's only going to be of a finite duration, and it has to be limited, and candidly, with respect to those that, you know, Ms. Fields was saying, are there's coming in for permanent land development?
No, no.
That wouldn't impact them anyway. And so, the reality is, we have this debate in every jurisdiction. You talk about a moratorium on zoning, what you're talking about is you're talking about build-out two or three years from now, is what that's going to impact. So, that's a fairly, that's not a terribly effective response, which I know wasn't being proposed.
No, but yeah, I just, I, again, I'm, I'm asking for, so listen, before staff, Ken, you got a-
Yeah, I mean, is there a way to strengthen our subdivision ordinance to require a certain amount of distance from certain right-of-ways, or to, to require a certain amount of common area be preserved? Is that a way we can do it legally? I know a lot of times that now, I've seen jurisdictions that if they have like a pond, there has to be a certain amount of the pond, has to be accessible to all the residents of that particular subdivision, so that not, since the subdivision's the one we're responsible for upkeeping the pond, they make it so that everybody can use the pond. But are there things we can do to strengthen our subdivision ordinance that might not prevent development, but at least keep it so that we have the look that we want to from the roadways?
Let me grab that one, because I'm about to step out there, and I guess I'd rather step out there than have anybody else's name attached to it. I think the answer to your question to some degree is yes, and we've talked about this as a staff, that there are certain development patterns in neighborhoods, the least of which is a concept that we've talked about more than once here in Milton, and that's a conservation subdivision. You know, I was going to ask that question and just ask you to think about it, is, is what truly might be the objectionable things that are occurring here? Is it the fact that it's, you know, when you're starting to hear from people that it's just building too fast, too fast, too fast, is it the fact that it's building too fast, or is it the fact that it's building as fast as it is one acre at a time? And I know that's kind of a spark plug question that, that could end up with an assortment of reactions and responses to it, but if you're really looking at just the view and the style at which it builds, you know, you can protect your rural quality and your rural view sheds and how these neighborhoods develop, if you look at taking the allowed density and, instead of splitting it up one acre at a time, concentrating it to some degree to maintain green space in other parts of the development where, you know, you have kind of the best of both worlds. Now, conservation subdivisions don't happen very easily without providing some ability to not require a septic drain field, and you can read into that however you want to read into that. But, you know, so, if you start to talk about development options and how these subdivisions are developing, yeah, there's a way to develop them absent, you know, one-acre squares.
But is there a way to do it other than through the conservation subdivision ordinance? Because that would probably take a year or so to get through. Is there a way to do it by just strengthening our, our regular subdivision ordinance that would require a certain amount of common space in each subdivision, or require a certain amount of distance from public right-of-ways, or other ways to do it rather than the conservation subdivision? Because, I mean, I'm very much in favor of them, but because of the, you know, lack of sewer and everything in the areas and community septics, I mean, we're talking, if we pushed it, we could get it, couldn't get it through probably in a year. So, I'm, I'm just trying to look at other avenues to go down that we could get done quicker than that.
I guess I'd have to defer to Ken on that, is to, you know, you start to deal with excessive buffers and excessive undisturbed areas and mandating certain things develop in a certain way, when they're, to some degree, in AG, which is where most of this is entitled by right.
Well, yeah, I mean, subdivision regulations are a viable way of affecting land use, there's no question about it. And I'll just say, I guess, the obvious, the devil's in the details, and it's really going to be a, a matter of what, in fact, is returned, and, and we can just call it what it is. The, the balance is going to be, when do we go from a legitimate, reasonable subdivision regulation into an administrative taking, such that we have affected the build-out and the viability of the property to the effect that they raise these arguments like, you have impacted negatively viability to make a reasonable economic yield? And I'm not saying that's the only place we can end up, I'm just saying that it's just a matter of what the regulations look like, but just be prepared, that's the sort of argument you'll effectively hear, is that by regulation, as opposed to zoning, you've almost taken my property.
But other little things we can look at possibly doing that maybe aren't that drastic that would be?
Of course.
You know, the, the-
Of course there are.
The issue, though, I think I'm bringing up is, is it's a global, you know, looking at globally, that may be addressing that, a, a small solution or something that may help, but it doesn't help the, the obvious, the white elephant in the room, that, you know, I don't think people, you know, if they're putting nine homes versus 10 homes in a development, that's not the big concern here, it's, it's seeing the development of what legally can be done. You know, a great example of it is I heard today that, you know, there's property on, whatever, Broadwell Road or wherever, across from one of the new, you know, Crab Apple Crow, Crab Apple area, that's for sale, and the owners got accosted by folks that live in the, on the other side of the street, you know, in the fully developed mixed use, and accosted them, said, how dare you sell your property for a neighborhood? You know, we enjoy looking at it, and I think that's the big thing, and I don't know that there is an answer, you know?
Short of buying it.
But again, is there, you know, what, what do you tell somebody when they say, why don't you just stop it and make a minimum of five-acre lots for the rest of the land? I mean, I don't even know if that's a legal, legal way that you could even do that.
But it does raise a question, you know, we, we have a, a master plan for the community, we have a master plan for the city, is the build-out that we are receiving and the interest in land use that we're seeing, is it consistent with your plan for the city? And if it is, then, then what is the trepidation about the speed, as long as it's consistent with what your plan was? Does that make sense?
No, that makes sense, yeah, it's just-
Exactly.
Well, our plan, though, very clearly stated, we wanted to preserve the rural vistas and everything, and so that's why we're trying to figure out a way to do that, whereas, you know, people have a right to develop their property, but it sure, it would be nice if you didn't see one subdivision after another every time you drove down every single road in the city.
Yes, ma'am.
I think, too, you know, one of the things that I'm personally doing is trying to communicate, you know, a lot of times, and you guys probably got, I get a lot, you have people come to you with an issue expecting you to solve it, and sometimes you have to get them engaged and show them where their, their place in it to, where they can help with the problem. And, you know, part of it is, you know, get them to buy into, if, if you want to preserve land, and, and this is, you know, because folks move here in a new neighborhood and a new house, and they love driving by the farm next to them or whatever, but at some point, you know, that, that's what they have. But get them to get together with people, say, you know what, instead of sitting back and complaining, maybe we need to talk it up, people need to buy the land and- maybe we need to talk it up, people need to buy the land and live on it or farm it, you know? We need to talk that up and get people interested to do that, so we can take care of the situation, you know, that way. Which, again, is getting harder and harder to do, because the market, you know, the market doesn't make sense with land values now. It doesn't make sense for people to, even if they can't afford it, to buy a big piece and to sit on it.
Think of what you're talking about, we have been going through, and that's kind of the essence of these visioning sessions we've had on Highway Nine and Deerfield and Arnold Mill Road. So, that process does exist, but we've got, aside from those areas, we've got another 35 square miles out here, and that's what people really see, is all the trees coming down, up and down these other corridors. I had a comment, too, it's a little bit different, but relates to the same thing. I noticed there's four of these subdivisions with in excess of 50 homes in each of them. What are we doing as far as planning, or having these developers plan these subdivisions for a minimum of two entrances, or two means of ingress or egress? And what comes to mind are a couple of crook, white columns for one, and triple crown for another, where there's only one means of ingress and egress, and I see them as big public safety problems.
We've had a discussion amongst the staff, Carter's shop and my shop have talked about, interconnectivity, for one. There's an issue with public roads versus private roads, in terms of that interconnectivity. But I really firmly believe from a public safety, and for just traffic control, and for other reasons, that we really, the larger ones, we should be looking at two means of egress, ingress, egress, or else that interconnectivity with the subdivision next door, many times of which there is a row that has been stubbed for that purpose. So, we are becoming much more cognizant of looking at that and requiring that, because I think we're building in problems that we really don't want in the future.
For sure.
Anybody else? Well, I think the, and, you know, again, thanks to our staff for communicating this information, and we all need to be ready and be thinking and prepared that, you know, this is coming, it'll probably come in spurts, but, you know, we need to do the best we can to try to follow the desires, not all the counsel of our citizens, and the path that we, the vision for the city. But we need to be able to communicate, you know, the facts of what's legal and what's not, and what we can do and what we can't do, so.
Do you of the council have any objection to us continuing to refine this, as I've said here, I've made several notes of some changes that need to be made in the document itself, but... Is there any objection to making this information as public as we can make it? I mean, I'd like to get it out on the website, I'd like to get it... I think at some point, information, almost over-communicating is appropriate in these types of circumstances, because if you over-communicate, then you probably just barely scratch it under-communicating in reality. But this is...
Yeah, I totally think the more...
Total trans...
The more and the quicker we can get information out, because, you know, a lot of times, folks will be upset about something, but when you get them the information and explain it, then they can grasp it. And then maybe there's, you know, route that they can, we can all do something, but, yeah, I think we're better off rather than trying to, you know, catch up after, after the horses out of the barn, so to speak.
And that's why I think it's important to show what we have actually rezoned, and what we have inherited, and it's being built out just because that's the way it was.
You know, and that's what, I'm talking to Chris and Jason and staff about communication. I want to make sure people know that, you know, every time they see a new house going up, or a new neighborhood, that's not because of the direction of the city council or whatever individually. That, you know, that is something that they had the right to do 20 years ago, and we have not changed. It's just the market's right to that, so.
I think you really hit the nail on the head when you said that, you know, we're not here to solve all the problems. And when we become part of the problem-solving group, then we fulfill our role, I think, a whole lot better than if problems are brought to us and said, fix it. Because there's not anything that any of us, single-handedly, can do to fix a lot of these things. So, I think when you really, when you hit that nail on the head, that's true, that we've got, you know, we've got many different people, many different viewpoints, and they're all important to actually deciding what this community looks like moving into the future, so. We'll do that, I'll refine this list to some degree, we'll hone in on this map and make sure that we're not releasing information we shouldn't, or we're not releasing bad information. I might, for the purposes of public release, leave off the pre-development staff meeting items, just because those are things that, you know, that can simply be a tired kick, question-asking session, that has absolutely no possibility of going anywhere, so probably remove those, but then we'll go forward. And if there's anything you'd like to see here differently, or amended, or added, we'll plan as this, as this new normal moves through the community. We'll plan and do updates on this fairly frequently, just to keep you guys informed as to what's going on.
We're not infringing on any of these developers' rights at all by presenting their information.
Well, I think that's a good point to take the ones that are just getting questioned and just...
Correct.
Now, you know, this may, over time, it may evolve to where you can also do a map that shows, which basically is our comp plan, but to kind of ring a bell with folk, you know, our citizens, that, hey, this is what eventually could happen if it's all built out, which, as it's currently zoned. I mean, here's where we are now, but it could be this.
And I think you're actually missing some subdivisions that there's been no development on for the last four or five years, but were previously plotted, that, you know, we'll start seeing some development on very quickly now that they've changed hands and everything. But I think there's several more here that aren't on this thing.
I think this is just what's permitted though now.
Right, but that means there are several other subdivisions, I believe, that, you know, you already have some roads in, but you haven't had any houses built on that we'll start seeing houses being built on.
Can you give me an example of one?
I mean, there's one up 372, up Birmingham Highway, at the very, where Echelon is. Those roads are in, but no houses have been built yet, but they, yeah, yeah. No, not on that left side of, on the right side.
With a tennis court sitting right there on the road?
Yeah, and the golf course, yeah.
Right, back up to the golf course?
As you see, take this map home and study it, because it, you know, this isn't, if you spot stuff that we don't have on here, I don't...
Because I think there are several other ones, like I said, that the roads may be in, but yet houses haven't been constructed, and they won't turn around.
Should be a list, that'd be great. The more help we get on being complete, the better off we are.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Any other updates?
You're welcome.
Okay, do I have a motion that we move into executive session as added? A motion voted on our agenda to discuss land acquisition and personnel.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's see yours.
Next, next time I'm at the... Reese's, you can just send down those jolly beans with those dollars.
There we go.
Thank you. I like Reese's Peas and the men. Reese's peanut butter cup. Stick with stick butter. And you can have all the Milky Ways in the world. You don't like that Paramore? And I like these, this is your own.
Well, those are good. Well, see, now that you do have enough, it's just a wide scope.
I'll lay it out there.
Then you're limiting what I can take out of it.
Milky Ways.
Okay, so I've got one. What about, uh, baby roots?
I'll give that up.
It's got peanuts in it, so.
I like those.
Oh, yeah.
I got to fly business class, which was nice, so... That's, that's, uh...
Eighteen hours in an airplane, twenty hours in an airplane.
A move to reconvene the meeting?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn?
The move.
Second motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
I don't see what he's going to...